Let's call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. I can see there's no one else recording the meeting, so we will go again. If you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, under special recognitions, we are... Would you like to take care of the other two?
Sure.
All right, and then we'll come back to this.
Okay. So, two very positive special recognitions. First, Cynthia Bazanet, she's a longtime English teacher at our high school. Recently defended her dissertation titled "Masculinities, Gendered Expression, and the Social, Emotional, and Academic Well-Being of High School Boys." She defended that through Leslie University, so she now is a Doctor of Philosophy. She earned her PhD, so I wanted to make you aware of that great news. And then also, Annette Lamarese, she is a longtime math teacher. She's the department head at the high school. She was just recently announced as a... She is announced as a Mass Insight Education Partner in Excellence Teacher Award. And that's due to her work in the Advanced Placement STEM Program. As noted on the superintendent's memo, she will be honored at a Partners in Excellence Award Celebration on Tuesday, June 2nd, down in Boston. And this award presentation is being hosted by Partners in Excellence, a group of philanthropic individuals, organizations, and foundations committed to STEM education. I can tell you that Annette, along with her counterparts at the high school, is extremely devoted and committed. And it was... It's really nice to see that she has earned, and I mean that sincerely, earned this award. She will receive a $1,000 check as part of this, and I thank her for her commitment to our students and to Advanced Placement and to our program overall. Great news.
Okay. Now, we will honor the passing of someone who was heavily involved in town politics and actually largely responsible for getting me involved in the school committee. And I'm happy that I'm here, and I'm happy that he pushed me in that direction. If you'd... I'll just read Joe Hamel's obituary. Joe Hamel, 70, passed away on Monday, March 23rd, 2015. He leaves his beloved wife of 46 years, Janice, his son Joseph Jr., and his two daughters, Barbara Rizzoli and Allison Hamel Dahlquist. He leaves nine grandchildren, Joseph III, Olivia Hamel, Crystal, Matthew, Catherine, Elizabeth, and Laura Rizzoli, and Michael Jr., and Samuel Dahlquist, and two great-granddaughters, Lilian, Alicia, and Nisa Rizzoli. Born in Springfield, Mass. to Florence Equivalent and Leo Hamel, he served in the U.S. Army as SP IV Military Policeman, 1964 through 1967. He was an award-winning professional news photographer for several local TV channels for over 30 years and past president of the Boston Press Photographers Association. He was a local businessman and actively involved in local politics. Joe was a great asset to the town of Auburn, serving as chairman of the Cable Commission and as a member of the school building master plan team. He worked tirelessly to see the press box become a reality for Auburn High. If you please join me in a moment of silence for Joe Hamel. Thank you. Joe will be missed. But now seek... I don't see any student representatives or citizens' comments, so I would seek approval of minutes of March 24th meeting and April 1st meeting. Do I have a motion?
I have a mo... I'll make the motion that we approve of the minutes from March 24th and April 1st, if that's no problem.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye. Aye. It is a vote. We now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are a number of out-of-state field trips, as we try to do each April, so that people can have ample time for planning. There are a number of out-of-state field trips, all of which you have approved in the past. So, the first one in... With a... This type of an agenda, if you wanted, you can take them each separately, or you can take them as a whole. So, I offer that to you in advance. But I'll go over them each. The first one is the Auburn High School trip to Madrid, Spain. If you remember, they actually weren't able to take that trip this year. They did not have enough interest. Basically, there were a number of trips that were being taken. But it has been run successfully in the past. Several times, we've had also the students from Madrid come and stay in Auburn, which was exciting, and they've come to the school committee to be introduced. So, Mr. Kramer is seeking approval for a trip in April of 2016, so just about a year from now. The next trip is the Auburn High Science Department Field Trip to New York, New York City, for the Body Worlds at Times Square. And again, this is a trip that the science teachers... Mrs. Craver, being the lead on this, has taken a group of the Auburn High Anatomy and the AP Biology students. I remember when she came, actually to seek approval last year, I think it was the Community Service Learning Night, and she was all very excited about the whole science behind this. The next one is a trip that has also happened before. It's for the chorus and band students from Auburn High School, under the direction of Mr. Charlie Pietrillo, our finance director, to go to New York and actually participate in a Broadway Classroom program that they've done. And they're seeking that for either in April or early May. The date's not yet determined on that one. The next one is the field trip to Quebec. This has been a trip that's been ongoing for 30 years in the district. Karen Fedella has come and presented many times. Prior to her, Mr. Jerry Delongchamp ran this program. It has been done successfully. In gender, they make it over a long weekend at some point in January of 2016. Another trip that has happened annually, again, very successfully, is the eighth graders' trip to Washington, D.C. Their intention would be to go next year in late May or early June. That's been a successful trip. And then, the Pequot Museum trip. That's the third graders' trip, and that has been going on for an awful long time as well. This time, it will be done with the whole Swanson Road Intermediate, which will be all of the third graders together, which will be nice. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on those.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Which of these are overnight trips? The one to Spain, obviously.
Correct.
Quebec, and...
And Washington, D.C.
And Washington, D.C. The others are just a long day.
Correct.
A very long day.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. Yes, the trips to New York are day trips.
Has everyone had an opportunity to review the field trip requests? Do we have any questions concerning them?
I have a question. I have a question about the Madrid trip. Does anybody research the host families?
What... Mr. Kramer, we're fortunate. He has a very strong relationship with the teacher there in Madrid, and they've been friends for an awful long time. So, it's students from that school. So, she is familiar with them. The question has been asked in the past, can we do a query check on families there? And unfortunately, we cannot. You know, this trip here, the students would do exchanges with them in advance by that email exchanges and whatnot and stuff. So, they'd grow some comfort, but there really is no way for us to do a check on them, other than through the word of the teacher who's there, who knows the families well.
And parents are aware of that when they're signing.
Parents are aware of that, yes. Mr. Kramer. So, once approved, he would go through that whole process and make this opportunity available to parents in informational sessions. Yeah.
And then, are there any actions taken if a student gets into a host family and they're not comfortable?
So, there would be at least a couple of chaperones there. That has not yet happened, but certainly that would be addressed. So, if there was any discomfort at all, to move the child out of the home, and could it go and be with the chaperone to make other arrangements. I'm sure they would absolutely do that. The goal is really for the kids to go there, become comfortable, and really get embedded in the life in Madrid. But kids need to feel comfortable to do that. So, if anyone ever did not, we would certainly do an accommodation.
Okay. And then, my last question was, are there adult chaperones also going and teachers?
There are. There are, yes.
All right, thank you.
Other... Any other questions, concerns? Have we had any issues, even minor incidents in the past concerning the Madrid trip?
We've not. No, we've not had, actually, on any of these trips. No, we've not. I mean, we... The teachers do a great job with chaperoning, and the kids... The teachers really do a good job in communicating with the parents and with the students. You know, there's a lot of expectation around this, that you're going to... For the Madrid trip, to another country. And I will tell you, when the kids came back here, it was clear what a bond the kids had made, because they came and stayed in this family's home too. But there's been no issues at all.
I would say that...
They do, yeah.
In the three years I have been here, I haven't heard of a single issue for the overnight trips or otherwise. That being said... Wayne?
I've got a question, as I usually always do with the trips and stuff like that, is do these students that are less fortunate, do you have a mechanism in there to help them?
So, it depends on the trip. The Washington, D.C. trip, they do a tremendous amount of fundraising around that. So, there is money that is raised. Some of the other trips, the music trips, are likely supported by Fame, the Friends of Auburn Music Education, but students do need to pay. What we really try to do is ensure that no child who wants to do a trip is excluded from it. The only one that could be potentially, the Madrid, Spain trip, that's a pretty substantial investment for them to go. And I don't believe, I can certainly reckon that, that they would be ample fundraising to support that, quite honestly. But all of the others, certainly the Pequot, the Washington, D.C. one, they do lots of fundraising around that. And actually, I know that this question has been asked of Ms. Fedella in the past in terms of fundraising. I'm not sure that they do any substantial amount around that either.
Could you just check on that Spain one again for me?
Sure. So, the cost, I can tell you, based on the form that was filled out, is approximately $2,000 per student to attend that trip.
That's why I've never been to Spain. Any other questions?
Nope.
Does anyone have an issue with bundling these field trips that we've all been able to examine and talk about?
Does Wayne want to wait on the Spain one?
The Spain one.
Do that one separately? Wayne or Wayne?
I think even if...
You know, at this time, I think... I'll let it go, but I want clarification for the next time we either do it or at our upcoming meeting.
Actually, if I can, through the chair and looking at the paperwork that was provided, it does state that funding for the trip will be the responsibility of the student and his or her family. Fundraising for the trip will not be an option. So, just to be clear, I just wanted to get back to you on that in reviewing through it.
Are we willing to bundle these, or do we want to do them separately based on what Dr. Brunel just said?
I don't mind bundling them, other than the Spain one.
All right, well, why don't we... Why don't we bundle... Why don't we get the Spain vote out of the way, and then we will go back to the other four? How does that sound?
Okay.
So, I would entertain a motion to approve the trip to Spain.
I'll make the motion to approve the strip... The trip to Spain.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion on that?
None, other than what I had said.
All in favor? Aye.
No.
It is a vote. Now, I would bundle the remaining trips. If I could get a motion on the remaining trips?
I'll make the motion that we approve the Science Department trip to New York City, the field trip, the Music Department field trip to New York City, the High School field trip to Quebec. Is that it? Oh, and the third grade trip to the Pequot Museum, oh, and the eighth grade trip to Washington, D.C. Did I get them all?
I think that's all.
Sounds good.
Are there any questions concerning those trips? Oh, we have a second? Okay, perfect. Now, are there any questions concerning the remaining trips?
No.
None? All in favor? Aye. It is a vote. Moving right along.
Okay, the next item, so thank you for that. I will share that with them. As you know, the Packet Card Principal, Mrs. Chase, who would have been the Packet Card Principal, has announced her retirement. We have put a posting out on School Spring. We have numerous applicants already for that, and we'll be conducting interviews. I don't anticipate that they will be starting until after the April vacation week, just as an FYI. But would seek, if you are so interested, one or two school committee volunteers to be part of that.
Is the... Why don't we start off by asking, is there any interest in taking part in those interviews?
I would.
Ms. Harrington? Anyone else have any interest in taking part in them?
I can do it, but if someone else would prefer to...
Are you looking for two of them or none?
One or two. You can't have more than two, otherwise you would have a quorum. So, that's really up to you. It's varied, quite honestly, on administrative positions.
I'd like to make a motion to have Jess in jail as school committee board members.
Wayne makes a motion. Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it is a vote.
If I could ask a question through the chair. Assuming, you know, we find a new principal. I don't know if we have internal candidates or not, but assuming we don't, is there any way Mrs. Chase could be available to help this person? Because you're going to have all new teachers at a school...
Right.
...that they don't know, and then you'd have an administrator that doesn't know this from either.
Right. Mrs. Chase and I have discussed it already, and she's very willing to stay on and help support.
Oh, okay.
And she would not be leaving as of June 30th. It would not be at least until July. But she's willing to come back and help support in any way, because she wants to see it be a success too. So, that has been discussed, absolutely. Yes, yeah.
Well, thank Mrs. Chase for us.
I will.
Definitely appreciate that.
Yeah.
She's done a great job.
She has. She has. And also wanted to let you know, as you are away, Mrs. Kozic, who was going to be the Assistant Principal, is actually returning by her choice to a kindergarten position at Bryn Mawr. So, we have posted for an Assistant Principal at the Swanson Road Intermediate School. So, Mrs. Lopez will begin to form her team, again, likewise, after the April vacation week. So, I'll keep you posted as to how that goes. The distracted driver program, Officer Kennedy, our school resource officer, notified me that he has secured this program coming to Auburn High, and it will be during the week of May 4th to the 8th, so just a couple of weeks down the road. It's a 44-foot vehicle that contains driving simulators. And I think the timing of it is great, in particular for our students, as prom season is upon us, and really emphasizing the point of how quickly accidents unfortunately can happen. He does have... There's a prom program with two guest speakers on May 7th for the student, and he's very excited, as am I, about this, because the prom is scheduled for May 9th at McKinnon's Hall. So, I think the timing is perfect, and I thank Officer Kennedy for his resourcefulness in bringing this to our kids. I think it will be a great program.
It sounds wonderful.
I had an opportunity to see some of the students performing at Bay Path on this piece of equipment, and it was pretty interesting.
Was it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, the students all seemed to enjoy it. They were glowing when they got back, and they were surprised at just how bad they were driving with the distractions. So, hopefully, our students here in Auburn can gain the same understanding.
That would be great. That would be great. Wanted to make you aware, I know a question was asked, actually, by Mark Benal at a recent school committee meeting regarding the Thanksgiving football game. So, they have secured... Mr. Garner has secured, at least for the next two years, anytime an agreement made is made, it has to be for at least two years, to play against Holy Name. Next year's game will be played at Holy Name, and then the following year, in the fall of '16, it will be played here at Auburn High. As you remember, that was as a result of the 43-year tradition with Oxford that had ended. And believe it or not, that's already been two years that have passed, because we've fulfilled our obligation with the other district. It is. It's amazing how quickly time goes.
Well, that seems like an excellent matchup.
I think so. I think so. I think everyone's excited about it.
Any comments?
I'm glad you got to work it out, so that we could have it on Thanksgiving.
That's perfect.
Excellent.
Yeah. And I think a Worcester school through the chair, it's in close enough proximity for families to drive and go and enjoy, and back to the real tradition of Thanksgiving football. So, that's great.
And also another good program, so...
Right. Right. They can be a competitor.
Some good matchups. Thank you for... To Mr. Garner for getting that done.
Just wanted to keep you apprised, Mr. Hanfield has already begun... Actually, this is something that begins long before now, but graduation planning, just to remind everybody, that it will be on Friday, May 29th, at 6:30. And I just shared with you some information that goes out to the students' families at Auburn High School, the seniors, obviously. So, this has already gone to them as they plan, and they will be, once again, holding the Bon Voyage party that has been held, actually, by the parents of some seniors. So, that is being coordinated, and will be held at Juggers Gymnastics in Cherry Valley this year. So, that's a great thing. It's an exciting time, as Mr. Hanfield says, for the students and their families for high school graduation. So, it's coming quickly.
Now, is it true there's going to be air conditioning this year?
I will tell you, I'm hopeful. Let me say that.
As long as you open the doors.
I've got the under-promise and over-produce, so I'll leave it at that. But that's the hope. That's the hope.
That's all I wanted, was hope.
You have it. You have hope. We have hope.
Thank you.
The next item to share with you, Town Planner Matthew Benoit had recently requested some support from the school district, and I saw this as a great opportunity for us to potentially be involved in. They're seeking grant funding to install or create a Packet Card Meadows walking trail through a grant. So, I did include through the letter that I sent in support of that. I think it has great learning opportunities, but also a great benefit, I think, for the community, who would use a walking trail. So, we'll keep you posted on that, but the letter of support was shared with you.
Any comments, questions?
Just another good thing to happen, to keep our students off the streets and, you know. I think it's a plus-plus all the way.
I do, too.
Absolutely. I'm sure the town will make great use of it.
Yep.
We now move on to unfinished business.
So, we have, as you know, negotiated successfully both the nurses' contract... Okay. And the ABA contract. So, what we ultimately decided on for both groups, and I want to thank both groups for their collaborative negotiations that took place, very respectful, open communications, which really is what we try to seek in characterizing any negotiations that happen. Both agreed to a 1.5% increase in the first year, a 1.5% in the second year, and then 2% in the third year. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I am happy to report that both have gone before their respective groups and have been signed off. So, with the vote of support from you, at the end of the meeting, you can sign the copies, and they will be considered ratified.
And those percents, again, were 1, 1.5, and 2?
1.5%. 1.5% and then 2%.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Excellent. I would entertain a motion to approve the school nurse contract.
I'll make that motion to approve the school nurse contract.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I would just like to say thanks to those who are on the committee who made that happen. Thank you, Dr. Brunel.
And Mr. Page.
Mr. Page, that was you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. And I would entertain a motion to approve the ABA contract. Do I have a second?
Second.
Again, I would like to thank those involved in making this happen. Much appreciated. Any other comments? All in favor?
All aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Excellent.
The next item, you had asked that I bring back to you some potential reductions in terms of the FY '16 budget. If you recall, the... You have gone through... Leadership team has presented, and you have gone through various iterations, each increasingly less of the budget brought before you. And the latest budget that you have approved is one at a 2.21% increase. As I reported at the last meeting, Mr. Barber and I attended the Finance Committee and made the... Mr. Fahey as well, I'm sorry, attended the Finance Committee meeting, and they did vote at that time to support the town manager's recommendation, or town's leadership recommendation, 1.55% higher than the current approved budget. We basically have between the 2.21 and the 1.55, about $150,000 difference that is noted there. And I did put in here as a point of information that I do think is important. We are taking two schools offline, and those funds will be paid in the heating costs by the town. That was per vote of the school committee, and shared with the town manager and the CFO. If we combine what the electrical and fuel costs for JB and Mary D. would have been, it would be approximately $107,000. Based on the formula for the new schools, square footage and the mechanicals and such in there, that's been budgeted at about 250... Exactly at $250,000. So, there's a difference of $142,386, which is... Can be shown as the difference. I did meet, as I do always, with the leadership team, and we discussed at length the different scenarios of how we could potentially get to the 1.55% increase. And one thing that we are very certain of and very committed to is the new positions that were added, particularly those that address and help to support the emotional needs of our kids, with the guidance counselor positions, the school psychologist positions. We have some that are required by IEPs, that we have to have a 128 with those individuals. But particularly the guidance and school psychologists, that really gets at students' emotional health issues. And we have great kids and great families in Auburn, but we're not immune to the challenges of society out there. And so, we discussed, you know, that our top priority is to preserve those positions, even if we go to 1.55, because those are positions that are going to directly impact, positively, we believe, our students. So, some of the cuts that we're proposing, I would tell you, none of them was an easy cut. None of them is a cut that we want to make. But, you know, to try and balance it, we want to have those positions in front of our kids. You know, so eliminating, you know, the lacrosse program was not an easy, you know, discussion. Ones that were easy was, we're going to be able to... Because we're going to engage the movers in this fiscal year, because we're going to be out early enough, that money that was set aside in next year's budget, that's an easy thing to cut, because that's legitimate. We'll spend it this year, so that's $15,000 that we have taken out. We saw some minor reductions in some special ed costs, but we look to our supply lines. And not that we don't need those supplies, we very much do, but we'd prefer to do that as opposed to losing these positions. Or, you know, the... We did cut down on the eBooks. We have iPads, and we need to supply books and apps for those. We've made a reduction in that. We'd prefer, you know, hold off on those, perhaps come back and follow special town meeting and seek approval for those, because it's more important to us to have the bodies and the trained people in front of our students, because that's what's going to benefit them. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about this or any of the budgeting process.
Wayne?
I have a couple of concerns. I know you and the leadership team and the school committee as a whole has voted on this budget a few times, the draft budget. And you've been cutting it down, and cutting it down, and cutting it down, and cutting it down. And the thing is, as a taxpayer of town, and somebody that wants to make sure our kids And the thing is, as a taxpayer of town and somebody that wants to make sure our kids get their education they needed and when the special needs and guidance councils and stuff like that we're cutting out, I don't feel comfortable. I mean, there's other departments in this town that have new vehicles, I mean SUVs, all kinds of stuff like that, huge raises, and I just don't feel comfortable going to the 1.55. I mean, we've done everything we can do to do this, but in your note, as you were speaking, you were talking about in the town meeting coming up, that we may go back there and go for this, the two positions. If that is, and the supplies, if that is what you're intends to, I will vote for this, but I'm not comfortable with it, because I think this committee and the leadership team and superintendent and everybody has cut us down so much and we keep doing it. I mean, we gotta worry about educating our children. We gotta take care of our kids that have special needs. We have a lot of issues we have to deal with at schools. And if we keep cutting back and cutting back and cutting back and not getting the support to our children, I don't know why we're sitting here. That is my personal feeling of what my job is to do on this committee. Thank you.
I would, I would have to, are there any other comments?
I was just gonna say, I totally agree with Wayne. And when I read of children that get involved with drugs or worship, suicide, it breaks my heart, because I love kids and I want all kids to grow to their full potential. And if a guidance counselor or a school psychologist could make that difference in keeping those children with us, then shame on us if, if we have to cut money that could have saved a life or two or... I mean, kids today are exposed to so much and a lot of them take desperate measures to make, make themselves feel good. And we've gotta do more in the schools to make sure that doesn't, that isn't happening. I mean, the outside influences today are awful in some respects. And when I pick up the paper, I see, it's, it's every week a young person, we lose another young person, and it's like, it breaks my heart. And we've gotta keep these, we've gotta do what we can for these kids. And we've gotta keep them mentally stable so we can educate them. I mean, it goes together. I don't think Auburn wants to shortchange their young people that way. I really don't.
Thank you, Gil. Yeah, you've, you've been there, you've walked the walk, so I appreciate those comments.
You too. I mean, sometimes you see a child that if they could just get the right help, you know you could turn their life around. And you try, but there's not enough in place to help them.
You're right.
And we need to do more.
I completely, I completely agree. I must have brought it to that. And you need, we need these people. I can't support a budget that won't support that, so.
I would, any further comments?
Yeah, no, I don't support a cut either.
Well, well, I, I don't, I don't know that I, that I wholly support this. I know, as, I like to be a team player and I like to, if other departments are facing cuts, if other departments are facing downfalls, then, you know, I like to be a team player. But, you know, you guys made some, some very good points. Is it worth, is it worth one life? And I don't wanna be overdramatic, but it's, it's quite a possibility, especially, you know, for, for the younger kids that are going down the wrong path. So, you know, we're dealing, we are the experts here, not us, but, but the leadership team. They're the experts on, on education and I don't know that, that anyone else, though they are probably well-educated themselves, should be dictating what our children need. That's, that's, that's my opinion, so, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to get, take a further look at this any, at best. I don't know that we even, do we need to take a vote on this tonight?
We absolutely can. If you'd like me, you know, to go back and take another look at this, I could certainly reach out to the town manager and the CFO.
I guess my question is, are the other departments at a 1.55 increase?
They're at various levels, so I could get that information for you.
Various levels, being higher or lower than?
I would say, you know, that there were some that may have been lower, but, but many, from what I'd seen, were higher.
Were higher.
So, I could certainly request that information if that's your wish and bring it back at a future meeting and, and follow up with discussions with the, with the town's management.
Through the chair, actually, what I think might be an interesting number to know is what percentage increase of staff are the other, are the other departments requesting? Because if we're adding three people to a staff of four, five, or that much, however many, however many are included in this number, you know, I mean...
Yeah, we're never gonna be able to compare apples for apples when it comes to the dollar or, or the staff, but I, I get what you're saying. We are, we've got a different job here. Our job is to educate and as Gil said, it's, it's to keep our children safe and Wayne was going down that same path. Yeah, that's, that's our job here. We've got the experts who tell us what they need and, and as Wayne said, you know, it's our job to make sure that they have the tools that they need, or else, or else why, why are we here? So, it's not so much about the numbers, but I was just curious if, if that was across the board, if it was a 1.55 across the board.
No, I believe through the chair, it's a compilation of the various town departments and a percentage and average was found and that was what was applied to the schools, as I recall. One piece of information I do wanna share, so the governor's budget is out and we know that there was about a $46,000 increase allotted to Auburn for Chapter 70. The House numbers came out, we've not yet had time to analyze them, but it looks like there's about an additional $12,000 in Chapter 70 monies. We still have yet to see the Senate numbers come out and then they'll need to be in conference in terms of coming to agreement. So, there is still a very long way to go with the budget coming out from the state. And I think in our likelihood, because of a new governor who was given the right to present the budget later than if he was a seated governor. So, that was presented a little bit later. So, I think in all likely, I'd be surprised if we have a solid number by town meeting. And I think in our likelihood, it's gonna be well into June, you know, so I think there will be, there is information that we're just not going to know by town meeting. But I can certainly gather this information. If you have any other information, I would be hap, any other questions, I should say, happy to gather that. And what I would suggest is that we have another meeting, because our next scheduled meeting is not until May 6th. That's the night after town meeting. So, I mean, if we held one two weeks from tonight, that would be on the 29th of April. I don't know if that works for people, but it, that would be almost a week before the town meeting, which is on Tuesday, May 5th, just as a reminder.
Ms. Harrington, did you have a comment?
Yeah, well, we're in the throes of park testing and I was at Mary D today and they were in need of immediate specialist immediately. There was a crisis brewing. So, I mean, I hate to see any cuts to that area as well. So, I think that's just as important. If we're going to implement park testing across the board and that's the right thing to do, then I think we need the support to back that up.
I would agree and, and, and we had the town's full support for the most part when we went to them looking for additional funding for, for the one-to-one iPad initiative. We had the support there, we had the support on a lot of things and I'd be curious to, to know where their support lies concerning this. So, and, and again, this is not, I, I don't wanna put down town government, they're doing, I just read an article yesterday, I believe it was, they're doing a fantastic job with, with our funds, with, with the tax base and, and they're putting the money, money into the right places, but it seems like we're doing okay. And, and we're doing well enough where I don't think that, that we should be making these type of cuts in important positions like this. So, I would, I would entertain a motion if there, if there were a...
I'll make, do you want a motion to put it on hold until our next meeting?
Yeah, why don't we?
And have the superintendent look into it further for us?
Yes. Let's, let's do that. Let's take another look at this again. I know we love to be team players, but, you know, to an extent. So, Wayne, your, your motion is to have a separate meeting scheduled?
Put this on hold and have another scheduled meeting prior to town meeting so we can discuss this or our next meeting.
It looks like April 29th would be.
Okay, that's fine.
And maybe we could push the other meeting back to, to meet that meeting date.
Okay.
That's fine with me.
Do I have a second?
Not available, but I'm sure you have enough, right?
Yeah. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
Thank you. I will have that information. And at the next meeting, I will have my evaluation information for you. I have not prepared that. I apologize.
Now, this could be historical.
I completely agree. Completely agree.
Sure, sure. She's too busy, I can't believe it.
School building committee meeting, we were able to, we had, weren't able to have a quorum for a couple of meetings, but we did meet on Tuesday, April 7th. We took another tour of the middle school, we actually took it the week before as well. And I will tell you, a couple of you were able to join for that. And even in a week's time, I was able to go on both of the tours. It's amazing, the, the progress that's being made. I posted, I think it was probably from the first tour, a number of pictures on the Facebook page, and that usually gets extreme interest from the community on that. And we really do thank the community for their support around that. So, but we did share with them at the meeting, your recommendations from a prior meeting. They did approve unanimously to add an additional $5,000 for mature plantings. Mr. Page spoke very much in favor of that and also shared within the names of the practice and synthetic fields, which they appreciated that information too. And I think the sentiment in general was that it was really nice to keep the history of the land here as part of those fields. I did request from them their financial support of the fence as part of the cross-country track. They didn't take a vote, but they expressed very much their support of it. We're looking to get a price on that and we'll bring it back at our next meeting. We actually have one on the 28th of April. So, the expressed support, I would think, is what you're saying.
Yes, same to me.
Yeah.
Through the chair, that's the fence on the trail to keep them from going over the cliff.
Correct. Correct. Exactly. Yes. That's a good fence. Yes.
Safety fence.
Safety fence. Yeah. Yes. The master plan team will not meet again until May, however, Mr. Fahy, Mr. Ringer and I meet every Tuesday morning. And thanks to both of their organization and hard work and Mr. Fahy's, then securing the bids, which Mr. Barber helps assist with, Mr. Fahy has got a full plate and then some, I will tell you, with all of the projects that are going on, it really is tremendous and we owe him a huge debt of gratitude. He's doing a great job with it. So, Swanson Road Intermediate School will, will have the facelift that, that we wanted it to have, so, which is great. And the Building Reuse Disposition Advisory Group had their most recent meeting on the 6th.
Through the chair, just to give you guys an update, we did get to meet with the Housing Authority in Auburn and it, it were a really productive meeting. We also were able to meet with a legal counsel who could also tell us what, you know, was within the town's right to do, what was in its school, the school district's town rights to do with, with both of the buildings. We would like to invite the public and anyone, you know, anyone here as well to attend the next meeting, which will actually be a public hearing on May 4th in the Selectmen's Room, that's on Monday. And we're then gonna be soliciting feedback from the community based on, kind of, we'll have, I believe the Housing Authority will be there to answer questions, as well as the Reuse Committee, as well as, I believe, Mr. Fahy as well. So, so we'll, we'll have quite a large group there to address any questions, hear any feedback or what you'd like the community members to say.
Is that meeting at 7 o'clock?
It's at 6:30.
6:30.
Up in the Selectmen's Room. So, all are welcome.
Thank you.
Excellent. I would, I know I'm always giving thanks and congratulations, but if you, if you could just go back to your various committees and thank them for their service, Wayne, we really do appreciate that. Appreciate your help as well.
Sure.
Now, we move on to new business.
Thank you. Just a reminder, with town meeting being on May 5th, we are planning to, should you affirmatively vote to hold a meeting at 6:30 in the Guidance Office prior to town meeting and then recess for the meeting and adjourn following it.
I'll make a motion to have the school committee meeting start at 6:30 at the high school prior to town meeting.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
I wanted to make you aware, we have, in, in town, we've had for a few years now a lacrosse team, a club team, that has been organized by parents and run solely by them. In order for them, and as you know, we hope certainly to add a JV lacrosse team next year into the budget, assuming it is approved. As part of that though, and in order for the club team to play in scrimmage against other MIAA-approved teams, we had to complete this form, Eligibility Rule 53. We shared with them our expectation or our goal of adding this next year. Now, this program will still be run fully by the parents, by Auburn Bandits. It will be their responsibility to transport them there, equip them, uniforms and such, but really this submission of this form is a great help to them, because they'll get to actually play other teams before they get to the, the JV level. So, I just wanted to share that with you and, and keep you apprised. And I thank the coaches for their work in providing this additional opportunity for our kids. It's, it's been a big success.
Through the trio?
Yes.
So, we have a JV team, is that because we're just starting out and we don't have anyone experienced to go beyond that level?
So, we actually don't have a JV team yet. What we've put in the budget for next year is a JV team. This is considered a club team and so that's what you would normally do, you'd start with JV, build up the support and as those kids get older, then we would add, get to the varsity level.
All right.
Yes. Yep.
I would say that there's, there's been a lot of interest in lacrosse in town. A lot of the younger kids are getting, they're getting involved younger and younger and, yeah, it's really quite a growing sport.
Wanted to make you aware, start and end times of the schools, we actually have, there will be 10 of us, Mr. Barber is leading this, we're actually gonna be doing a bus simulation on Tuesday morning at 6:00 in the morning or 6:30 we're leaving, so...
Actually, at 6:15.
At 6:15, okay. We'll see all the difference, yeah. Actually, we're looking for one more if we're looking for a volunteer, so, so we can ride all the 10 buses based on what we have to date for parents who have signed up. And we just wanna confirm that we can get safely to each of the schools in time. It seems likely that I may be bringing back to you a recommendation to shift, likely only the elementary schools, start and end time is probably by a 10 or perhaps 15-minute swing, but that's one of the, the things we're doing on Tuesday. So, that will be part of the May 6th meeting, because we know, once those are set with your approval, we wanna advertise those to families so that they can make plans for the fall, should they be required.
Any discussion? So, as of now, you don't see a need for any further busing?
Uh, not at this time.
Additional buses, I should say.
No, so that's, that's partly too what the simulation will do on Tuesday, is for us to see, but based on people who have signed up to date, we don't believe that we will need additional busing, but that's, that still remains to be seen. And unfortunately, we are still down from last year's full number. Do you know approximately?
Through the chair, we're approximately 80 students lower than last year's full, but as of this point in time this year, we have quite a few more that have actually, based on the advertising and the notification to all of the families about the need of having the bus passes and the applications in-house earlier, we were actually very successful to have over 1,400 applications already in hand.
Wow. Excellent. Wayne?
Just while we're on busing, I would like to thank Mr. Barber for his help and we had a problem with a student that was walking in the street and he got everything straightened out, so now they pick her up at the end of her street instead of have to have her walking up, up the road, in the middle of the road. And I wanna thank you for his quick response and getting that fixed.
You're very welcome.
Hey.
Just wanted to take a moment. Upcoming, we have Administrative Assistance Day, Teacher Appreciation, School Nurses, but even just in general, all of our staff. The successes that we have in the Auburn Public Schools is a direct result of the hard work and time and energy and true dedication that our, our staff members put in. I'm happy to say that the people who work in this district truly love what they do and it shows. They care tremendously about the kids, they, they go above and beyond for them. So, I will certainly be noting to them my appreciation, but I wanted to make you aware as well, because over the next few weeks, we'll be doing that. In the same vein, at, April being National Volunteer Month, I extend sincere thanks to our PTOs, the Fame, the Booster Club. Our PTOs just right now are running the whole keepsake those Mrs. Harrington spent, I would show, the entire day.
You don't wanna know.
Plus, on the, the T-shirts and the note cards. But the number of volunteers and people, whether they are part of a more formal organization than the PTO or Fame or Booster, or their parents who give of their time to go into school once a week or once a month, all of that helps to make us the success that we are. As I said earlier today, ours is a people business and the most important people are the little people, the, the students that we have. But the work that happens with them only comes as a result... But the work that happens with them only comes as a result, all yourselves, your volunteers on this capacity in trying to do the right by kids. So, I thank you for your service. And to all the people who volunteer, it really is a team effort. So, thanks.
Very well said. And I would agree that it's... We give a lot of credit to the leadership team and the superintendent and everything that happens at the top. But, yeah, it goes all the way down to the volunteers. And that's why Auburn is so sought after as a school district. That's why school choice is big for us. And that's why when you go to different towns and people talk about the fields that we have and the facilities that we have, it's, you know, it's a reason for us to be proud. And again, so thank you to all those committees.
And then finally, the upcoming events, as it does each year, this list gets longer and longer as the spring approaches. And certainly, when we get back from the April Vacation Week, and I think it's fair to say everyone is ready for the April Vacation Week. Spring has sprung finally and to get outdoors a bit and things. Between the high school play, that's the weekend of May 1st, the middle school play coming up, graduation at the end of May, the book fairs, the distracted drive that we talked about, town meeting, there are field trips. So, an extremely busy time of year, but certainly all good things.
I don't see square dancing on the town.
Well, I don't think that may be.
Thank you for reminding me.
We already have it.
All right. That's cute.
You can go, George.
My son doesn't agree. He may not feel well that day.
They did them on Tuesday.
It is cute. They have bandanas and cowboy hats. And it's, as I said, not all of them enjoy it, but it's a field to watch.
If I could ask one question?
Sure.
On the High School Musical, do they sell the tickets ahead of time for that?
They do. They are sold in advance as well as...
At the door.
At the door.
Because I'm thinking of going in that. It's been so long since I've done something like that. I wasn't sure.
If you got a Sunday matinee this year, it would be helpful.
They do, yeah. So, if you are in touch with me, I can... Actually, if you call into the high school, if you drop off money, they will definitely get you tickets.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Or I'm happy to do it for you too.
Okay. Thank you.
How about the square dancing you're interested in?
No, we signed you up, George.
I used to give up my prep time just to watch my sixth grade's square dance because it was quite the sight.
It sure is. Anything else on the new business?
Well, actually, I just wanted to add to the schedule. Just the art show for all the students K3 for Auburn Town is going to be on May 7th. It's over at 8:00 in Auburn Night's Gym.
Is that on you?
No, because we haven't got that far yet.
Yeah.
Oh, one day less.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
No, that's okay. That is a great event, too.
Anything else on the new business? Okay, moving on to business and financial.
Through the chair, included in your packet, you'll find for the first item for business and financial is the year-to-date budget report. This has, for the most part, all of the updated encumbrances and expenditures for the district up through last week. You'll see where there's going to be a couple of negative values. Those will be items that I'll be discussing with you in a few moments for our budget transfers. Are there any questions that you have on the year-to-date budget report?
Any questions? Seeing none. And we are looking for a vote.
Next in your packet, you'll see two sheets. The first one is for school committee's informational purposes. It's the budget transfers that we're requesting as of this evening. Again, this is just for informational purposes. Includes changes for increases in supplies for some of our encumbrances that we've put through the system, as well as travel expenses, payroll encumbrances, changes that took place. A couple of the ones that are within the same functioning codes, so it's not for the purpose of needing an approval, but just for informational purposes as well, to fund carts to house iPads within Brimmar as well as Mary D Stone, some of the technology enhancements at the Swanson Road Elementary, iPad apps for the one-to-one program or an expansion of it for high school, as well as to replace the AEDs and the related supplies for those units district-wide. Are some of the items, again, for transfers within function codes, but again, for information purposes. The second sheet, which you can have the option of either approving all five of these items at once or individually, but for the most part, I'll go through all of them and then you can decide what you prefer. The first is to transfer for us to fund HVAC and welding repairs at Brimmar for $2,000. The second one was to fund repairs to the garage door at Packard Chod for $5,000. The third one is to fund the hot water pump repair at the high school for $10,000. We also had to fund the district-wide firewall for $18,000. And the last one is to fund exterior improvements for the 10 Swanson Road for $9,500. Do you have any questions?
Are there any questions regarding any of those? Make a motion to approve them?
I make a motion to approve the transfers between the series requested by the business manager as a bundle.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Thank you. In addition, you'll see an update for our Pro Pay, which is the MSBA payment requests and mission reports that we do on a monthly basis. All of the requests that have been submitted up until now have been actually fully reimbursed. We're currently working on the reimbursement that was approved by the building committee last week, and that should be submitted next week. Are there any questions on this?
Seeing none.
And then lastly, you'll see in the packet is actually a listing of our updated revolving account and our other special revenue funds that we have within the district. The one that I obviously point out each... I'm hoping that we come through is the encumbrance for our school lunch because we encumber the amount of the liabilities for our salary obligations for all of the staff. Those are balances that, you know, we don't have a budget to start at the beginning of a fiscal year. It's basically earned on a day-to-day basis. So, that's the only value that you'll see that actually has a deficit at this particular point in time. Are there any questions that you have with this? Oh, my apologies. There is one other one, which was the Auburn Education Foundation. And that was relating to the PD supplies that we did for our dual PD day with Minister, where we had... We're still waiting for reimbursement. And that will actually eliminate that deficit number that's in that account.
Any questions? Mr. Barber? Seeing none?
All set. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. We now move on to policies.
The final item, and this has been, actually was brought up during nurse negotiations. And we had started this last year, actually. What they are seeking, and this would come with a standing order from the physicians that we contract with, that would allow, and they would be... Parents would need to approve of this and sign off, that children, the nurses could deliver Tylenol, Motrin, Bacitracin Ointment, Calamine Lotion, or Benadryl, or for high school students only, Tums. They are items that they would need to... So, the doctor would give a standing order. They would have those available. And, you know, sometimes if a child has a headache, rather than send them home, if they had Tylenol or Motrin to give, assuming a parent had signed off, it could allow the child to not have the discomfort and to stay in school. So, the nurses have spent considerable time working on this. I've reviewed it in length. There are safeguards in there the parent would need to sign off. And we'd have the physician's standing order for this. So, I think it makes great sense for us to do this. And it is my recommendation that you approve the updated documents.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? Any discussion?
I have a couple of questions. So, will this form be given to every parent at the start of the school year? Or do parents have to seek the form out?
You know, that part, quite honestly, we've not yet discussed for us to get this approved. But I would anticipate that we would give notification, perhaps through an email, that parents have the option to do this. But then we'd need to get the signed form before anything could be distributed. So, you know, certainly, I think it would make sense to start it at least at the middle school and high school levels for those students in particular. But I would... I'll work with the nurses in terms of a distribution. We would not need to send all of these documents to them, to families. The one that we would really need is their permission to treat form that they would need to complete. But I think it would need to come with some background information, you know, some of the, you know, safeguards that are in place. And this really states many of those right here. You know, if a child requires more than, say, three doses of Tylenol in a 30-day period, they wouldn't be able to give it, you know, because that may be indicative of a different issue of things. So, we'll have to work out how we'll notify the parents about it. But they'd have to be the parent permissioned sign before anybody could administer anything.
Okay. And will the nurses notify the parents before they administer, even if they have the okay?
The information, I believe, is that they don't need to notify them before. They do need to notify them that it has been administered to keep them in the loop as well.
Okay.
Yep.
That sounds reasonable. Any further discussion? We did have a second, correct?
Yes.
All in favor? Aye, it is a vote. And do we need to move to executive session?
We do, very briefly, yes, please.
I would entertain a motion.
I will make the motion to enter executive session per Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subset A 2, to discuss strategy with respect to contract negotiations with union personnel and non-union personnel.
Well done. Do I have a second? We'll call a vote.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
Ms. Sutton?
Yes.
Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Scobie?
Yes. Good night, everyone.